Okay, welcome all. We will call this meeting to order. The notice requirements provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice having been properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on Monday, April 12th, 2021, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Davis. McKenna. McCray. Mills-Ransom.
President.
Councilman Welch. Can we ask, can we ask that everybody please mute their devices, please? Thank you. Vice President Good.
President.
And Council President Hockaday. You can unmute your device, Council President Hockaday. We have a court, we have a court. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, affectionately and shortly known as the CEBAC, for their participation in the City of Plainfield calendar year 2021 budget. We know all of you are busy professionals who have other responsibilities, but you've all were called to the task and participated in a very vital government function determining our budget. So again, thank you. You all are definitely heroes in my eyes. Our second item, we will have our CEBAC Chair present the budget regimen recommendations on the behalf of the entire CEBAC Commission. Robin Bright, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Council President, Councilmembers and Administration. I'd like to give recognition to the members of the 2021 Citizen Budget Advisory Committee Members. Hugh Thomas, appointed by Council President Steve Hockaday. Jacqueline Robinson, appointed by Councilwoman Gillette Mills-Ransom. Lillian Williams, appointed by Councilwoman Stacy Welch. Victor Harris, appointed by Councilman Sean McKenna. Walter Harris, appointed by Councilwoman Ashley Davis. And Yolanda Smith, appointed by Council Vice President Barry Good. The committee overview, the entire committee team would like to extend our sincere gratitude to the MAP Administration and the Plainfield City Council for including residents in the budget process. The opportunity to play a part in the city's budget process is a true sign of transparency within the administration and city council and a unique and valuable learning experience. The committee conducted four meetings to review the entire budget by department and prepared questions for the department heads that we deemed substantial. The CEBAC Committee believes the MAP Administration and the city council are making a concerted effort to stabilize tax rates while continuing to provide all needed services. We believe that all department heads strive to keep their budget on par with the previous budget year and also be complimented for their hard work in achieving this goal. While we believe most departments submitted a bare-bones budget, we are offering the following suggestions we feel essential and should be considered. The general budget process recommendation. We collectively feel that it would be more advantageous to the process if the CEBACs were engaged earlier in the process to be effective to effectively perform the duties charged with. Via city council resolution, it is recommended that CEBAC be activated early in the budget cycle to perform a meaningful review of the proposed budget prior to the budget being introduced to the public. The process should include an in-depth orientation for CEBAC members to acquire a deeper understanding of the sources of funds included in the budget and all statutory items that must be included in each department's projected expense. The process should also allow for dialogue between CEBAC members and the department heads to better understand how the requested budget provides the resources necessary to achieve the goals as presented. We're recommending that they provide an explanation for the department instead of being moved and are newly created such as code enforcement and a parking authority. Provide reports finding the handling of union contracts as well as salary bands for non-union contracts. Goals and objectives should directly correlate with corresponding budget in-line items to better understand allocation of funds. We recommend that you provide detailed information such as roles and need for all consulting requests in each department. Goals and objectives should be more transparent and detailed. The fact that most council members do not ask questions during a hearing sets a tone that asking questions is derogatory rather than informative. Even if council members are asking questions privately or via email, which we believe most are, it would be helpful and create a picture of involvement in the process if they also asked their questions again in open forum. The CEBAC budget recommendations and observations. The last two years were unique due to the COVID pandemic and many services that the city normally provide were cut, which we believe helped to bring a zero tax increase for the year 2020. The department directors took a no-frills approach when creating the 2021 budget and it appears that the overall budget is relying heavily on surplus. The concern is with more COVID restrictions being lifted and more services starting to come back online, how sustainable was this supposed to be going forward if the surplus is not replenished? There needs to be a more straightforward explanation of revenue items and have depletion of surplus impacts the city budget rating, bond rating. More emphasis should be placed on generating additional income as a strategy to reduce the residential taxpayer burden and improve services to all segments of the city population. During the budget hearings, we have remarks from the police director that talked about state mandated expenditures specifically concerning the body cameras worn by officers. The director noted the high costs incurred were due to purchase of cameras and a software contract to maintain the technology. If this project was the result of a state mandate, then it could be assumed that other communities also need to comply. If Plainfield could form a consortium with other communities, it seems logical that bulk orders would produce cost savings. This would be particularly true in ongoing software maintenance contracts. Along the same lines, the fire director spoke of cameras being installed in fire trucks for safety. While we realize that body cameras used by the police versus the fire truck camera are quite different devices combining the hardware and particularly the software contracts could result in savings. The Director of Communications and Technology, during her prepared remarks, talked about improvement in use of technology throughout all departments. Specifically, she noted the goal of reducing stationary costs in all areas. The director did not elaborate on any details of this project or what the potential savings might be. Through all our CEBAC meetings, we know that high stationary costs for many departments. It would be beneficial if this could be accelerated and potential savings be targeted. On the 2021 CEBAC Department Budget Recommendation for the Police Department, the department should have a breakdown key performance indicators of crimes for the previous year. This should be broken down citywide and by wards. Methods and efforts taken should be detailed to the public. This will make sure the budget requests is actually working or effective. A yearly forensic audit should be performed for the police department to evaluate what needs to be optimized and streamlined concerning operating budget costs. All new hires should reside in the City of Plainfield. Create new ways, new ways police can connect with the public, increase awareness in the community, and create substations. 5/20/21 CEBAC Department Budget Recommendation for the Fire Department. They were basically the same as for the Police Department with the exception of developing and utilizing volunteer fire corps to assist the fire department in non-emergency situations or to help with suppression events. This team could also teach fire safety to children, help with bookkeeping, install smoke detectors, and perform home safety checks. Additionally, this could migrate high overtime costs and physical exhaustion of the current workforce. All new hires should reside in the City of Plainfield. Develop a stronger cert community emergency response team program for not only adults but for teenagers as well. The 2021 CEBAC Department Budget Recommendation for Information Technology. Maintain the website and keep it current. This should allow the public to navigate effortlessly and with a clear understanding of all available programs. Create a communication plan that will encourage residents to participate in civic duty such that you can fill empty commission or board positions. This will encourage more civil activism, improve community relations, and prevent default commissions such as the Environmental Commission. The Recommendation for the Economic Department. Conduct community surveys to understand and determine what the residents of Plainfield want and need. This will allow more alignment when developing outreach strategies. Develop marketing strategies to attract business or corporate flagship to Plainfield. Plainfield needs to identify additional zones and areas for businesses. The Department of Public Work Recommendation. Department should give a breakdown of revenues through violations and what those violations were. Provide all businesses and revenue expected to be earned from the businesses. Also provide tax abatement that is given if applicable. Provide plans to cut costs through shared services with other municipalities. Corporate Council. Department contracts are used time in time out. Senior employees should be able to review and create contracts that are repetitious in nature. If an attorney is needed to sign off on a document, then an attorney could be hired to add a fraction of the current budget for corporate counsel. A breakdown of volatile just matters and estimate of what it will cost the city, both pending and possible litigation. We're recommending that for the Plainfield Library, we continue to support their current budget and operating costs. In addition, we recommend increasing the partnership and collaborations between the library and other city departments. This will provide for better services for all Plainfield residents. The last recommendation we have is for the Plainfield City Council. For the city council, the CEBAC is recommending that their budget be increased to support an increase in city council salary to possibly hire legislative aides that will help with the day-to-day operations. Perform an audit of the current organizational structure for the city councils such as roles, responsibilities, and salaries to determine how we can align and optimize the municipality budget. Use the city's website and social media platform to create ward-specific platforms so residents can communicate, collaborate, and interact with their elected councilpersons. Implement training for all council members and Robert's Rules of Orders as well as training in conscious bias, microaggressions, diversity, and inclusion. Conclusion. The CEBAC team overwhelmingly agreed that this administration has gone above and beyond to present a budget that would not, that will not allow for an increase in residential property taxes for year 2021. This administration should be applauded for bringing a 0% increase in property tax two years in a row. We are encouraged with the number of new projects planned for the city that will ultimately help to stabilize taxes to our residential homeowners and fully support this administration and the mayor in these efforts. The CEBAC team would personally like to extend gratitude to Mr. Ron West, Finance Director, for sharing his knowledge and assistance throughout the budget review process. With the number of roles that were paved in the last two years and the handling of pandemic crises, it's evident that our tax dollars are being used responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you so, thank you so much for that. Thorough report, a lot to consider. And so you'll have a written copy of that to all the council members, correct?
Yes, I sent a written copy this morning to Director Ron West and asked him to email to all council members.
Great, thanks. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. So we'll hear from CEBAC members. You can give the CEBAC members an opportunity to speak on the budget. We'll start with my CEBAC representative, Mr. Hugh Thompson. How are you, sir?
Good, good. Hello, everyone. I just want to thank everyone for this opportunity. This is a great insight into how Plainfield works. We often see things happen in Plainfield. We don't know the reason why or how it came about. But having this understanding, it brings a lot of excitement. And I'm definitely looking for Plainfield to be forward. I've been in Plainfield all my life and I definitely see the progression. So I want to thank everyone for what they've been doing and just keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm just going to go in order on my screen. Next is Mrs. Yolanda Smith. You're on mute still.
Good evening, councilmen, men and women, and President and Vice President. I also want to agree that this opportunity, I took it with great responsibility of, you know, looking into the budget and having the opportunity to stress my opinion with how we should move forward in Plainfield. I also hope that you take our recommendations and implement them, especially where we were looking for standardization and harmonization throughout the different departments. We feel that that will assist in the cost savings that we're looking to move forward. And I know we'll be talking about different revenues, bringing more money into Plainfield, but also I stress that when we be together that we do allow the CEBAC to form much earlier in this process. I know we've written all of this and you take this in stride and I hope you will look forward. We will look forward to your response. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vic Harris.
First, I want to thank Councilman McKenna for giving me the opportunity to be a member of the CEBAC Committee. It's been very informative and helping me understand the complex inner workings of a community I've lived in for over 30 years. Second, I want to thank the CEBAC team, the conversations we've all had have been very educational for all of us. Particularly also, I want to thank Robin and Walter because of their prior experience that were able to help us work through this enormous thing called the binder of the Plainfield budget. And beyond that, I did have a comment. As someone who has spent my career in a more corporate-type environment, I like to highlight the importance of technology deployment. This could be a real money saver and that's why corporations do it. But the reality that we found, these individual departments are usually ill-equipped to do the necessary research and timely deployment of money-saving technology. We found much better results were attained when pure tech people would work with each of the departments and help them meet and get the right technology that they need and also making sure that technology was compatible with what was being done by other departments. You didn't want any of these departments doing it in a vacuum. And I think that if we push forward the technology group that we have in the town and have them work more closely with the various departments and having the council and the mayor get involved early on in the review process and make sure they're buying off on what is expected and what is the anticipated savings that some real money could be saved in the long run for the town. Thank you.
Thanks a lot for your comments. Next is Mrs. Jacqueline Robinson.
Hi, everyone. I too want to really thank Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gillette Mills-Ransom for thinking of me and asking me to serve on this committee. It was very interesting. I did not even know that this committee existed. So I commend the entire council and the mayor for wanting citizens to have the opportunity to review the budget. I also really, just because of my day job, have to just tip my hat to Ron West and Ricky Garts because I can only imagine the pain that they suffer in trying to put together all of this information. And as I call it, you know, you have to herd the cats when you're trying to put together a budget. And I appreciate the work that goes into this and working with people of very disparate financial backgrounds and trying to put together, you know, a $90 million budget. I know how difficult that can be. So I appreciate all the work that you did. I'm going to, the thing that most, that most concerned me was that I didn't feel like CEBAC could really, really make an impact in this budget because of the timing and when we come into the process. And not fully understanding all of the revenue streams of the city and what the implications are of, or the risk factors in the revenue streams and how that could impact the budget. So it was really, one of the things I said, kept saying was I wish we had been involved earlier and had the opportunity to really understand the revenue streams and also to have more, more in-depth conversations with the directors to really understand how the dollars being spent related to the goals. Because they spent a lot of time, you can tell, in writing the goals, but it was really difficult to connect the dots between the money being spent and how that impacted the achievement of the goals. And so I really wish and hope that if I'm asked to participate again next year, that we are able to engage earlier and have more time to really understand how, how the goals and the dollars relate to each other. And the other comment that I had, and this is specifically for the council, I expected that all of the council members would be asking more questions of the department heads. But the way that it happened, it seemed like asking questions is viewed there as derogatory and contentious, where it doesn't have to be. It's just informative. And I think it makes, it would make a better presentation if all council members asked questions so that the public understands that the council members are also engaged in the budget process. And I realize that you can ask questions via email, you can ask questions, you know, offline. But when, what the public sees is what happens in the meeting. So it looks like that the council may not be that engaged in the process because there's, there are no questions being asked. And so I just, and for the, for the benefit of CEBAC, I think we could also, we could also gain information from questions that you may be asking as well. So I just encourage that all council members ask all questions in the public forum so that CEBAC members as well as the rest of the public could be, could be informed by that, by those questions. But again, I thank everyone. I think the committee at CEBAC worked very well together. I hope that, you know, if I'm asked to participate next year, that it won't be in a virtual manner because I think a lot gets lost in this type of progress, process with a virtual, on a virtual platform. It would be much better in person where you could have real dialogue between the parties. But again, I thank everyone involved and especially Councilwoman Mills-Ransom for thinking of me in this position.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Next is Lillian Williams.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I just want to say thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you to Stacy Welch for thinking of me and selecting me to, to be a part of this CEBAC. It's been a true honor and pleasure. I've learned so much and it's greatly appreciated. I'm very happy with, with the way the committee has handled the budget. No tax increase for two years is amazing. It really speaks to the cohesiveness amongst the team. And I'm really, really happy to see that. I look forward to serving next year. One Plainfield, one future. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walter Harris.
Good evening, Council and other city officials. First, I'd like to thank our first ward Councilwoman, Honorable Ashley Davis, for allowing me the opportunity to represent a ward in doing this process. I appreciate it. I'd like to thank, also thank our, congratulate our committee, our CEBAC team for their dedication, their general concern, and their natural love for the city. They did an awesome job. You can explain to me as I'm a third-year Plainfield resident. I would though recommend, I would like to just recommend, now we do have a surplus in our budgets that we help, we use that to help bring Plainfield into the forefront of a model city for technological, social, and economic change. I believe that we're right on the cusp of being one of the best cities in the state and in the country. And finally, I'd just like to encourage that our constituents, our people, that they take advantage of all the services that this great city has. We don't use the services. And, you know, we don't get more time using services, the more money we get. And also like to just end it with the constituents become more involved. Push, push council people, push the administration so we could see a vision. Put a lot of pressure on them to make sure that they say what they're going to do. And I thank you for being a part of this process. Hopefully I'll be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you. What a wonderful group. Did I miss anyone before we wrap it up with our CEBAC Chair? I thought there was maybe one, one CEBAC member missing perhaps.
You missed the chairperson of the CEBAC.
Yeah, I'll finish with, I'll finish with her, even though we started with her. You can certainly, if you have any if you have any final remarks, Chair Bright, you can, you can.
Yes, again, I just want to thank the city council for providing this opportunity to regular citizens to learn the process. The team this year was great. This is my third time, third, fourth time serving on the CEBAC. I love it. It's, it's really an eye-opener to see how our tax dollars are being allocated and in relations to the services that are provided by the city. You know, I, the team this year was, was very good. They've asked a lot of good questions. But my one suggestion to the city council would be that when choosing members to serve on a CEBAC and not to slight anyone, you know, it would behoove everyone if, when they thought about people they wanted to choose to serve, that those people had some type of, not necessarily know about the government process, but know a little bit about it. And, you know, at least, you know, go into city council meetings, see how it works. You know, know, you know, just know a little bit about government. And the process. I think that will help move the process along. It will give us more insight on the budget and how it pertains to our taxes. our taxes. Why the money is being allocated in different directions. You know, I think it just would definitely serve a purpose if that happened. But again, you know, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. To give kudos to the finance department and each department head for bringing us another budget two years in a row with a zero increase. That's wonderful. I contribute that to all the the new projects that's going on that's slowly but surely gonna come onto our tax roll and provide some relief for tax, for residential taxpayers. You know, I'm looking forward to that. I think we're, you know, moving in the right direction. And I just hope that we could continue to move Plainfield forward in that direction so that we can have some relief when it comes to our tax base.
Thanks a lot, Chairman Bright, Chairwoman Bright. Thanks to all the CEBAC members for their participation. And also thanks to Director West for his stellar job once again. And to CFO Garts, your partner in finance. All right, so we'll now move to the citizens' participation, a total of thirty minutes.
Council President, can I just ask two questions real quick?
Why?
And first of all, they could stop complimenting Ron Wests and, just kidding, Ron. Ron's, I was on CEBAC, so I know how much Ron puts into this and the CFO in this case, Ricky Garts. But I, so I have two questions that kind of
Who are your questions for?
Well, you know what, I'll let Chairwoman Bright figure out who wants to answer these. One is, what does starting the CEBAC earlier look like? Like, when do you start it? I mean, if you started the next CEBAC tomorrow, that's way too early, but like, when do you start it? And how long does it run? And whoever it was that came up with that idea, or if there's multiple people that kind of had that idea, that's come up many times in CEBACs, by the way. You and I were on CEBAC together, I think, four years ago, and that came up then. And then the other one that I think is really interesting is the legislative aid idea with the council. And I don't think it's something that is like a full-time thing, but it'd be really cool to incorporate it either with college students or even better with high school students as a part-time thing. So that we're, it's like a mentoring thing for for those kids who are interested in social studies or government, or I honestly don't know what they call it. I think it's social studies or it's a government now. And what that would look like, because I think that's a really interesting idea from two vantage points. One, there's some additional assistance and then they're learning while they're doing it. So however Chairwoman Bright, you know, wants to have people answer it.
Um, I will, Jackie, would you like to respond to the question about the start time for the CEBAC?
For me, Councilman McKenna, it's when we were told earlier on that any substantive adjustment to the budget would mean that the process would have to start again in terms of the public disclosures. That sort of said to the team that we really couldn't make any substantive change here, even if we wanted to. So for one, it would mean getting CEBAC, having CEBAC have the ability to review the budget before that first public disclosure, so that if there were something CEBAC wanted to wanted to make a substantive change to, it could even be considered. So that would be one thing in terms of, and I don't know what the timing of that is, because I don't know when the budget process actually starts within the city administration, but it would be somewhere earlier before the budget is presented to the public. And the other would be, and to allow some time in there from when CEBAC members are sworn in and start their duties so that there could be more interaction with the CFO and the finance director to really understand the revenue streams, because it's clear that the department heads are more involved in the expense side than the revenue side, so to have the time to spend more, have more dialogue with with the CFO and the finance director around the revenue streams.
All right, there was also a question regarding the legislative aids in terms of what people thought about that and
That wasn't me.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I don't think that Councilman McKenna really had a question. He was just making, he thought it was a good idea, but maybe tweaked a little bit.
I
Children.
Kind of more curiosity question. Chair Bright, it was more of a curiosity question as what the rough thinking was. And maybe it was just that broad kind of a comment to be formed later, but it's an interesting idea to me to be able to make it a helpful yet.
Let's just, I don't know if there's anybody that wanted to speak on it. Let's just end it there.
I think that question came from Hugh.
Okay, so I see his camera's off, so maybe, you know, you can chime in on that at some other time and, you know, I know that Hugh does some work in Newark where they do have legislative aids for their council people, so that probably fuels some of the thinking. We're a lot smaller than the city of Newark, so we wouldn't be modeled after them verbatim, but, you know, we always look around at different towns and see what they're doing and try to glean the best practices or any tips that we can pick up to make our city better is also a wonderful thing. All right.
It looked like a CEBAC member, Walter Harris, had his hand up.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, we're heavy with Harris's this year, aren't we?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, great.
Yes, to your point, Councilman McKenna, there's, I think there's a need to even help the councilmen themselves. Y'all do a lot of things. Be a lot of places and it'd be a great avenue to have a legislative aide or somebody that can help y'all with y'all daily routine. Or if you need to be one place and your aide is another place, be in another place, or you know, just to have that second voice or that backup, let's say. How it looks, you know, that's something that's created through the process. I like the ideal of having a college student in political science join on or even someone in the community just that's interested in politics. And see how the ordinances and things are created. Hold on, so I believe there's room for it to happen. I think it should be room for it to happen, even though we're not a big city, as you say, as a north, we can lead the push, become a bigger city.
Right? Yeah, that's why I thought, you know, also Chair Bright's comment regarding, you know, just attending meetings and seeing how things are done is a good 101 for for the budgeting process, you know, to give some insight that I think could be helpful. Okay. BA Levinson, did you want to chime in on anything? No need, if you don't have anything, chime in on. All right, so we'll just move to public comment. Total of thirty minutes has been allocated for public comment. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon to be recognized. It'll be unmuted. Give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. Mary Burwinkle, unmute yourself. Name and address for the record, please.
Mary Burwinkle, seventeen eighty-five Sleepy Hollow Lane, Plainfield. First of all, I would like to thank all of the citizens of CEBAC. This is a big undertaking. It's a wonderful thing that you did, and I agree that if there's any way to start it earlier so that people could have a better understanding of what's going on, that would be a good thing, or maybe half the people on CEBAC ought to repeat the next year. So they've seen one budget and they know what's going on the next time. I think it's very valuable to do this and some, I feel this year, this year and last year, I sort of felt as though the CEBAC members were not being allowed to talk, or maybe they should have, or ask their own questions, but that's up to you, not me. I would also like to say that I was elected to charter study back in two thousand twelve and we met the whole year two thousand thirteen. And one of our recommendations in our report at the end of two thousand thirteen was that there ought to be legislative aids for city council. And, I mean, I don't know what the theory is in the cities who have them, maybe they have more money. Maybe the council and administration have a more cooperative attitude about who's gonna make policy, but but it would be a very good idea for our part-time city council to be able to have a legislative aid. I think that's a really, really good idea. And I also like to say that there was nothing like the team of Mr. West and Mr. Garts, and I'm really sorry that Mr. Garts is leaving, but glad Mr. West is staying, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Looking to see if we have anyone else with their hands raised. I don't see any at the moment. Okay, we have another contestant. Name and address for the record.
My name is Valisha Lowe. I'm captain of the Plainfield Rescue Squad. I live at ten eighty Field Avenue.
Greetings.
I had a question. I mean, I want to say, first of all, thank you for involving the citizens and the planning of the budget for the city of Plainfield. I just had a question in regards to supporting and the growth of, and the growth of the city along with the fire department and police department identifying things that have to be adjusted with them. Was there anything that was going to be planned out for the medical services within the city of Plainfield?
Was that your sole question?
Yes.
No, but that was it? You just want to know if, restate that.
I'm sorry, I wanted to know if there was any plans in regards to any support for the emergency medical services within the city, being that we are expanding, expecting an expansion. And you guys are like, are looking at the budget in that point.
Okay, so in relation to our growth, you want to know what thought is given to expanding the police and fire and emergency services? Okay, either BA Abison or Director Rest could address that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give this to Director West, but I I don't believe that the EMS, that they are part of our budget. Police and fire are part of our budget, but this is not this is not an organization that is, that has budget line items in our budget. Is the question, would we consider adding them to the budget? Is that what's being asked?
Yes.
They have been in the past.
That I will, that I will send over to Director West.
Yeah, I thought you did a fine job saying that it's not in the current budget. I think that there are a number of things that would have to happen legislatively with regard to the Plainfield Rescue Squad and its role financially with the city. And it would be something to be looked at, you know, going forward and I think the rescue squad should be coming forward with a, with formal request in terms of what it is that they are looking to to the city for, so we can give thought to how that would be done. You know, because that would certainly be in addition to the budget. And so it would be something we would have to figure out how to make that work, you know, because the rescue squad has certainly been very beneficial to the community. And if they are looking for support from the city financially, that's something we would have to figure out how to do, and the sooner it's on the table, the quicker we can get to some sort of a resolution.
And just to add to that, my understanding is that the Plainfield Rescue Squad is a nonprofit entity.
Yes, yes, it is.
And I know that there are regulations that prevent us from being able to give money to nonprofit entities, so I guess when you say that there's some, there's, you know, internal work that the rescue squad would need to do to, for us to be even able to look at them as an organization we can we can finance. That's, I think that's probably what you're referring to.
Yes, I was asking that question because I know in the past, I am new, fairly new to being up in this order, but I know that in the past, the Plainfield Rescue Squad was part of the city of Plainfield's budgets and I don't know what happened with that situation. That's why I was asking the question.
Okay, yeah. Thank you for your comments. See, is there anyone else? All right, I don't see anyone else with their hands up. With that, may I have a motion to close public comment?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public comment is now closed. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Council President.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.